Thirty, and we want to welcome you to the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four Fannin County School Board Meeting. What a great crowd we have here tonight, so we welcome you as well as those that are watching online. So, thank you for being here. And with that, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item on the agenda is invocation, and I'd like to invite Reverend Scott Mathis forward to lead us with the invocation. If any, if everyone would stand and then pla- please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we just thank you so much for this beautiful day you've given us, God. Thank you for the rain you've given us today, God, just for your goodness in our lives, Lord. I want to pray for each of our board members, our superintendent this evening, God, that you would continue to give them wisdom and that they would continue to seek your faith, God, for all the decisions they have to make, God. And we just pray for protection for our schools, for our teachers, for our staff and our students, God. We pray that every student that we have would feel special, God, and just feel loved by us, and that we would just show that love to them. You say in your word that one of the most important things we can do is love others, God, and just help us all to do just that. And as we enter into this Thanksgiving season, Lord, we just want to thank you again for how good you are to us. I just hope we'll all take a moment to see all the good things that you give to us. Every good thing comes from you, Lord, and we just thank you so much for that this evening, God. And we thank you most of all for Jesus, our Savior, and it's in his name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Mathis. At this time, I'd like to invite Deputy Tony Serianik forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. You may be seated. Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda. With that, I'll get Ms. Collis to pull up the minutes. We have one set of minutes from the regularly scheduled board meeting last month. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve the minutes as presented.
Board, we have a recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, by raised hand. Thank you. It is unanimous.
For the next item on the agenda, I couldn't be more excited. I want you to look around this room. Our students are amazing, and our faculty and staff are amazing because they're the ones that help support our students at school, and their parents are the ones that are amazing by supporting them at home. So, we have so many people to recognize and be thankful for tonight, and it is a blessing, and I thank God for each and every one of you. At this time, I would like to ask, since we have so many people, once you come up and people tell your story, and you get to tell part of your story and your accomplishments, if you will just return to your seat, and then at the end of special recognition, then everyone will come up and be invited for the photo for the newspaper in the school. So, thank you. And with that, I'd like to invite Ms. Allison Danner forward to talk about Ms. Eva Key and her being a state winner. So, we have, it's exciting to have a state winner for the poster contest, for the Office of Commissioner of Insurance and Safety Fire, not fire safety. I really looked it up. It's safety fire.
What an exciting time it is. Elementary people don't normally get to give many accolades for their students, like high school does for their athletics and all their events. So, we are very, I am very honored to be able to share with you Ms. Eva Key. She was a winner for the Office of Commissioner of Insurance and Safety Fire poster for the two thousand twenty-four calendar, and she will be in the November of their calendar with her Always Cook with Caution poster. We would love to share that with you, but they kept it for, to be published in their calendar. But she was one of thirteen winners out of thirteen hundred posters submitted, so we are very, very proud of her.
Ms. Eva, you want to say a few words? No, that's okay.
You're good. Thank you.
Very proud of you, sweet girl. Next person we want to celebrate is Mr. Terry Flowers, and I want to invite Dr. Ramsey and Mr. Henson forward to talk about his opportunity to participate in the lead career Technology Agriculture and Education class of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Well, good evening. It's always an honor to be able to be here and to brag about some of our accomplishments, but we're not going to do it with you sitting there, so come on up, Mr. Flowers. I'm just going to say a couple of words, and then I'll let, let Mr. Henson talk about this fine young teacher we have here. Mr. Flowers was chosen for the lead CTAE out of one of twenty, I believe, throughout the state, and he's already got to start. I mean, this is a tremendous honor that, that he was able to accomplish this and be able to do this, and he's already got to start doing it. And when he came back from his first event, he shared some things that he learned, and one of the things he learned was where to place his silverware when he was eating, which one to eat with. And he tried to show me, because something's got to be at twelve o'clock, and something's got to be at three o'clock, and work from the inside out. I don't know. I'm more about just grabbing the fork and getting after it. But he now knows the, the proper way to eat, and he also has to buy a suit. So, I promise, when we get Mr. Flowers in a suit, that picture will be plastered all over every social media in Fannin County. But very proud of his accomplishments and the job he does, and we'll hear more about him and, and his students here in just a minute, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Henson now.
Well, anytime I get in front of a microphone and I get to talk about students, I can go all day, but this is one that I could do the exact same thing because of how he impacts students. Watching him on a day-to-day basis, when he steps into the classroom, the students are engaged, they're focused, and I know at the end of the day, they're going to learn not only whatever he was teaching them, but something that they're going to carry for a lifetime. A lot of times, teachers come in and they are prepared and equipped through student teaching, several processes, and he come in through a non-traditional pathway, someone who has a passion for his skill and trade, and then the desire to see young people take the knowledge that he has given them and excel with it. And he does that on a daily basis. He is one of those that hands-on, involved, and it's not just now in the CTAE and skills. You see him in other classrooms. You see him collaborating with other curricular programs throughout our building, and he has not only become one of our leaders in our CTA program, he's one of the leaders in our building because of how he impacts students. And, I mean, I could sit there and continue to go on, but I am very thankful that he is a part of, of our faculty and staff, and that, you know, not only is he a, a great teacher and mentor to these students, but he's a, he's a good friend and a good impact on all of the colleagues, myself included. So, Terry, we say thank you.
Mr. Flowers, do you want to say anything?
He's going to wait until he gets his suit on.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. No, you don't, we don't have to have a tie to be official around here. Just ask anybody in the room.
Give a speech.
Uh-oh. Pressure from your students. So, speaking of those students, they have also recently been rock stars, and I have heard amazing stories about how they swept the house at an event called Skills USA. So, for our high school, we had a lot of winners for our high school Skills USA, and I'll let Dr. Ramsey and Mr. Henson explain a little bit more about that event.
Okay. Come on up. Coach Chastain.
Again, I would just echo what I said earlier about the pride that I have in, in what goes on at our school. Our CTA program is second to none, and this is the result of it right here. Our teachers do a tremendous job of working with our students, preparing them to go out into the world and accomplish great things. Our students are so talented in their ability to do these things. We have our basketball, ladies' basketball coach down there on the end that's part of this. Coach Flowers coaches football. Our, our teachers do so many things, and they wear so many hats, and, and they provide our students with such an opportunity to be successful, and I am very proud of what they accomplish and the work they do, and not, not just at this competition. Every day, every day, they come and they work and they do great things, and they do great things with students, and our students do great things. But I want to tell a little something about our, our two coaches here. Coaches will get excited from time to time, but not normally at a, a program like this. You know, normally, they're, they're a little bit more reserved. So, I had one of our board members call me that evening, and he said, I have never seen a football coach, a basketball coach, or any kind of coach as excited as those two young men when they won. Said they were jumping around, screaming, yelling. I have a friend who also is a CTA person, and he was there with his school, and he called me, and he said, man, he said, your guys are awesome. He said, I've never seen such excitement. So, obviously, there's a lot goes into it. They put a lot of time into it. They put a lot of effort into it, and it means a lot to them, not, not just our, our teachers and coaches, but also our students as well. So, very proud of these young men.
And women.
Yeah, and I think I probably started getting texts at some point, and you'd think you'd get some autocorrect, but it was just a series of letters. I don't know what he was trying to type or text, but, but then Coach Chastain sent everything that they were region champs, and then there were some, also some letters in there that I had to delete, because we wanted to make sure that, you know, we, it was appropriate. But with that being said, I am going to have Mr. Flowers come forward to recognize each one of them because of the individual skills. But this is the first time that when we, this summer, went over to look at what the requirements were going to be. This year, instead of having all the material and going there and having everything ready, and then you getting the material and going, there was going to be pre-work that was required to be done. It had to be videoed. It had to have certain requirements, and they were probably the most stringent that any of these competitions had been. And we were on fall break, and so I come up here, and every day during fall break, you had these students up here and these teachers up here working because they knew what was on the line, and they were putting in that type of effort and that type of work, and it was amazing to see not only the effort, but the intensity and the desire to do that. But I will say this, as much as they wanted to win that competition, as they were getting ready, what I was seeing, they wanted to make these instructors happy with what they've done. They were wanting to impress. That's the leadership that they provide in the classroom. And so, for that, I can't say enough about how they continued to prepare. It's just like any other sports program, any other, you know, business or skill trade program. They're trying to put forth the best product, and, and it showed, and it was evident to all the instructors that were there at the competitions that they were so far below where our guys were because of what they learned, and I would say that many of them could go out ready now to step onto a job site and be very successful with the product that they're putting in front of customers. So.
Mr. Henson, I apologize for asking this, and I should have said it before. There, we may have people out there that don't know what Skills is. Yes, can you explain that for me, please?
Terry, we're going to let Mr. Flowers.
All right, Mr. Flowers.
Do I have to use a microphone?
Yes.
Is that close enough? Can you hear me? Is this working? Can you hear me? All right, guys, I'm not good with microphones. I apologize. Or public speaking. All right, working on it. So, Skills USA is our CTSO for trade work. That is construction, welding, automotive, and that's currently all we have offered right now at our high school, but it goes on. I mean, it's a very broad program. Kids go to compete and stuff they learn in school, whether it's how to weld like Bailey did by herself, or like our fab team did, or our teamwork, how to work as a group. We go to our region events, and then you got to qualify and go to state, and that's what everybody up here done that is standing here, qualified to go to state this year in February. So, we'll get to go in Atlanta. We have our teamwork team, which you guys just step forwards. They know who you are. There you go. You got Cooper Hilliard, Reed Norton, Brady Coleman, Eli Plush. These guys had to build a miniature shed, pretty much, right? They had to do masonry. They had to do electrical wiring. They had to do framing. They had to do plumbing. Anything that I'm missing? Is that everything? And they all had to work together, right? Everybody had their part. They had another role. They had to get it done. And then we had our fab team, which is the first time, this year is the first time the fab team competition has actually been a in-person build. In years prior, it's always been an online test. So, this year is the first time it was a hands-on competition, and we won region. These guys, they built a oxy fuel cutting table, which was, hands down, was awesome. And yes, I was excited when we won. Then we got, would you please? Third. And then we got Nehemiah Watkins. He competed in solo masonry. He took third place, which also qualified him for state. Then you got Mason Ramey, who placed second and qualified, top three in individual events, qualified to go to state to get to move on. And then Castle, I forgot where you placed Castle. Third. Yeah, Castle placed third, and he is, and he still has one more part of his event that he has to do. He has to take an online test in January to seal his fate to go to state, so he's still got part. Seal his fate. That's good. I like it. Okay. And then, I guess that's everybody that won region in it. All right, then Briar. Briar placed third in cabinet making, which I really don't think he was far off the mark of being first. I think it was just a couple of little technical details in there that were going iron out before state, but it's awesome. That's the first one we've had, and second, second person we've had to make cabinet making since we have been here, so pretty awesome. And then that's everybody. Oh, then there's Bailey. I forgot about Bailey. All right, so Bailey is the individual solo welder, region champ for the Northeast Region, so super excited. This means we brought back state, or brought back a region championship twice for solo welding, and Bailey's had kind of a, I took her to every competition I think we could go to, so finally, times she got this one. This one was huge. And then because of all the points accumulated from all of our first places, our second place and third places, that gave us the region title. So, we walked home with the overall winner and won the Northeast Region for Skills USA and AGC.
So, so I'll keep it short, because people that know me, I'm a little long-winded when I talk sometimes. I'll just, I'm going to walk you back about three years, and I'll explain why we were so excited when we won at the event. So, this is my, my third year doing this job, and this is your fifth year. Well, three years ago, we went to this competition for the first time together, and the day we were there, we sat there the whole day walking around talking, and we just, we never, we were like, how cool would it be to win the whole thing? And at the time, we didn't know that that was realistic, because there's, you know, over twenty schools there all over the Northeast competing, and at the time, like some of these, these people standing up here, they were there as sophomores, and it just seemed so overwhelming. And then last year, we performed pretty well and had a few people that we, we disagreed with the judges, and we let them know how we felt about it, and when they started calling, calling winners, we started looking at each other like, we're about to take the whole thing. And it was, the last time we were there, the overall winner may be placed in a couple of events, and they were all our winner, but it was, and Mr. Cole was there, but it was winner, Fannin County. Second place, Fannin County. Third place, Fannin County. Region champion, Fannin County. And it was just, it was a sweep across the board, and we, we had a little trouble controlling our emotions, because it didn't seem real. But this year, with this group of kids, and it's a testament to what they've done, I mean, me and Mr. Flowers, we teach them a few things, but really, we get out of the way, and they, they've done such a wonderful job, and they've worked so hard. Some of them, you know, third, second, third, fourth year competing in skills, and they, I guess me and, me and Brady and Reed, we were the ones that were still there from the, my first year, right? And just kind of growing them up, and what they were able to accomplish this year was such a wonderful experience for us. They're awesome, like awesome kids. And, you know, what Mr. Henson said about people that could be employed right now in their field, like, here they are. So, so proud of them, both on the welding and the construction side, and, man, it was awesome. Awesome event. We're so proud of them.
All right, if y'all want to go back to your seats, we'll get you back up for a picture.
That's amazing. Mr. Flowers, thank you for explaining it so well, and Mr. Chastain, thank you for that great follow-up about the history. So, you can see that Dr. Ramsey's hanging out, because he gets the honor of talking about the next group as well. So, the Fannin County High School volleyball team, they made the third round of the GHSA Class A State Playoffs. Dr. Ramsey?
Yes, ma'am. Y'all come on up.
You, you know, one thing that, that you can see and tell by, by our students that have been up here and now is the enthusiasm that comes with what they do and the excitement that comes with what they do. And when you get the opportunity to brag, this is our favorite thing to do, because we get to brag on our kids and we get to brag on our coaches. So, this group of young ladies, very good season this year, accomplished something very difficult to do. They made it to the third. This is an Elite Eight volleyball team that you're looking at here. So, you know, the work that goes into that, the time that goes into that, and I just want to reiterate, their academic expectations are no less. You know, they, they still do everything that every other student does, but then they put in the time, they put in the practice, they work hard to be successful at what they do, and then it pays off in ways like this. So, just very proud of these young ladies. It was a tremendous season as a team, and then we had several students who, who were able to have tremendous success individually. I'll let Ms. Coach Aids talk about that, set some records, accomplish some things. But then I also want to point out that this season, Coach Aids accomplished her one-hundredth win for her career. So, that is a big accomplishment. You know, that happens for, for two reasons. One, you, you do it for a while, and you do it well, and you do it, you're successful at doing it. So, congratulate her on that accomplishment, and, and you have some, some pretty good players to go along with that to, to achieve that success. So, just very proud of this accomplishment, very proud of this team, and at this time, Coach Aids, if you want to come up and say a few words.
Actually, Bailey, I think, is going to give the senior speech, right? No? Okay, all right. So, a couple of things, just because I love to talk about Bailey. So, I, I think that it's important, what Dr. Ramsey said about the well-rounded athlete. Every student that you see in front of you has a three-point-five GPA or higher, and so it's not just like being great or doing well in school. It's excelling in academics at the same time. Bailey left her region-state win, right, your region win at Skills USA, and showed up to an Elite Eight volleyball game the same day, which is dedication. Riley is in the middle of her EMT program and had to leave. We've got several students working in, doing clinicals with HOZA or athletic training, basketball overlapping seasons, and so the time and effort and energy that they put into sports is only kind of the cherry on top for the character that they have. So proud of them. In the last four years, well, five years, they've made the state tournament every year. They have brought home the first region championship in school history. They've had three Sweet Sixteen appearances and one Elite Eight appearance. And that's not just a group of kids that are doing really well. That is a program from middle school up that is strong and that is united and that is built on character and ethics, which is what we try to do every day. And so I think that's probably their greatest accomplishment. One of the things that I wanted to bring up while they're out here and you're looking at them is not just their athletic ability, but their character as young women. We have three things that we talk about consistently, teamness, effort, and attitude. And one of our goals this year, our captains, Kaylee and Matty, brought up is, we want to have fun every day. Like, we want to enjoy the sport, and we want it to be something that we grow in as people and as teammates, and that's something that they were dedicated to, and you can tell by the way they carry themselves, the class they have, saying thank you to bus drivers for taking them to away games, Kessley, every single time. They get together and do the Lord's Prayer before every game, and that's important to them as one of their core values. We want them to be relentless in faith, family, friendship, and as members of Fannin County, and I think they've always exuded that, and I couldn't be more proud.
Coach Pass, do you have anything you want to say?
Okay, so congratulations again. Again, just, just very proud of, of all of our kids and their accomplishments and their work ethic and the kind of people they are. We have just some outstanding people in Fannin County, and it's just, it's an honor to be a part of it, but just take great pride in what they accomplish. So, send another round for them, please.
Thank you.
Can she have, can she have one more minute?
Absolutely. You can, no, Miss Aids, you can have all that.
Okay.
Okay, can Maggie Ledford, Matty Pelfree, and Kaylee Davenport hop back up real quick? Don't make that face. Yeah, now, now, now it's, no, I'm just kidding. Real quick, just some school records that were set this year that I omitted from my original, that it's important to honor. So, Matty is now our school record holder for career digs, which is really hard to do, because there's not that many in a game traditionally. So, as our libero, I don't have your final number yet from state, but she is our, she holds the record with over two thousand in her career, which is huge. Maggie Ledford is our, both our season assists record holder and our career assist record holder, who she, the person she baited out just happens to be her older sister, Abby, which is bittersweet, right? Like, it's kind of exciting for home bragging rights, but also nice to have two Ledfords on the leaderboard. And then also, these are our three that have recently been recognized as region honors. And so, Kaylee Davenport is our first team. So, the way they do region honors for volleyball is very different than other sports. You only get nine, and so, and it's by position. So, there's four outside hitters, two setters, two liberos in, on each of the teams, and so it's a, it's a small group of students, and we have twelve schools in our region. So, it's a, it's larger than like the typical standard regions. And so, Kaylee Davenport's a first team, first outside hitter for all-region team, which is huge. Matty Pelfree is second team, first libero for all-region. And Maggie Ledford was our setter for the honorable mention group. So, just to take a second, those are huge accomplishments with, you know, tons of kids in our region. That, it's a, it's a big deal to be recognized, so. Thanks.
Dr. Hodges, will you come brag a little bit for us, please, about the Fannin County Middle School Girls Cross Country? They made Division Two Public State Runner-Up.
That's right. Ladies and coaches, come on up.
Ladies and coaches, come on up. While they're coming up, I just want to recognize that not all of our team will be here tonight because we have some very versatile athletes. We have basketball and wrestling and all kinds of things going on for official games tonight, and so some of our ladies weren't able to join us, but I want to brag on them. As you can see and hear from all of the things that were set tonight, there's one common thread, I think, that all of these students have had in common. They work hard. They work hard, they put in the time, they represent our schools well, and that's what these ladies have done for a number of years. This year, we're celebrating a region win and a state runner-up win. And so that alone is to be commended, but we're also celebrating a legacy of success because this is their third state title in a row. So we have two wins and one runner-up. And so we're super proud of them, and I'm going to turn it over to the coaches to tell you a little bit more.
Well, I'm going to put you on the spot. This is Cindy Barnes and Jenna Saxon.
She told me I had to keep it short. So, I don't speak in front of people like this. I can talk to my kids, but I don't speak in front of adults very well. But, these girls have been tremendous all these years that I've had them, these past three years, and it has been dedication. You had to see them over fall break. We ran in the dark because, next time, could we try to schedule fall break when we don't have state with other things maybe?
Mr. Darren Danner is over a calendar.
But it was dark, and so we're out there with glow sticks running. They had glow stick necklaces and stuff, but this is a great group of girls. We do have some missing tonight, but they have two state championships, one runner-up, and two region championships. So that's a very, I know it's middle school, but I look for these girls to do great things in high school. And the one thing I did want to say was, these girls have the qualities that if they were to go out in the world today and apply for a job, there would be no job turn them down because they have what it takes to be that person or that employee. So, love y'all.
This is just my second year with these girls, but I was a parent before I was a coach. My daughter ran with them, and so it's been an honor to join them as a coach these past two years and to coach alongside Cindy Barnes because they just don't get better than that when it comes to coaching. She is one of the best in any game when it comes to coaching, and I've learned a lot from her, and I'm very thankful for this opportunity to be with her. And these girls are, just as she said, they are some of the best there is. Anytime anybody asks me about coaching cross-country, I said, "These are the best kids I've ever come across in my life." They're some of the hardest workers, sweetest kids, and, I mean, incredible student athletes. You know, they are just model citizens, and I'm just incredibly blessed and fortunate to have got to spend time with them.
And before they sit down, I just want to say a couple of other things. You know, these ladies pour into these students, all of these adults that have been up here. I just want to thank you for what you do for our kids. They could not be where they are and do the things they do without you. And also, like, I wish y'all could see these girls run. I mean, they ran in the morning before school, they ran outside in August in the hottest part of the year. I come from flatland, y'all, and to watch them run around here on these hills and do it beautifully, like, they are beautiful when they run. It's an art and it's fun to watch. And so I'm just super proud of them, and I just want to thank all of you for what you do to pour into our students.
Thank you. Ms. Jenna, Ms. Jenna and Cindy, if you want to just keep your plagers up here, we'll go ahead and we'll go, we'll go in reverse order. And Ms. Molly, if that will work for you.
I don't know about y'all, but that makes the day-to-day grind worth every second plus some. We have got, we truly have the best faculty and staff, kids and parents in the world. And I know, I talk to other people, so I know that that's a fact. So, Mr. Chair, Board, the next item on the agenda is the Fannin County Public Library. And Commissioner Jamie Hensley and Chairman Dustin Smith are here to present a rendering to you all.
I'm not going to lie to you, I sure am glad that that happened first. I have trouble speaking in front of a crowd myself, obviously, but, hey, we're thankful to be back here tonight. We told you as quick as we got some kind of rendering, we would come back. It has been a, it has been a long time coming. It has been a daunting task to get to this point, wouldn't you say so?
Hundred percent.
Well, we finally have something to show you, and after a lot of, a lot of putting people's heads together to come up with a drawing that we feel is pleasing to the community and pleasing to, hopefully, our school board and pleasing to the folks with our regional and our local library system. I'm not going to lie to you, it's pleasing to the Board of Commissioners. So I hope it's pleasing to everyone else. So, that being said, I will turn it over to Mr. Smith in here.
Appreciate it very much. Better speaker than I am. Lots of practice. So, as you requested, we have some renderings, we have the floor plan as well. The two things I recall that you wanted to see was this and the square footage. The square footage is coming in at 10,800, specifically 10,750-something, but rounding it up, 10,800. So, any questions on the?
Now, I would just like to remind the public that was here before that that was part of the original agreement for the land donation. The two things was the agreement to the exterior and the minimum square footage size. And I appreciate you honoring that. Mr. Chair?
So, first of all, are we making a recommendation on this to proceed?
I'm not, I can make a recommendation to proceed.
I need you to place it that way so we can get to a discussion.
Yes, thank you. I make a recommendation to proceed on this rendering.
Yes, ma'am. Board, do we have a recommendation? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
You have a second.
Motion and second. Is there any discussion?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I don't want to throw a rock and whatever, but what would be the possibility of putting brick where the rock is?
Well, we've, we had a rendering with brick up there. And, you know, we are, we're in budget constraints as well. So we thought that this rendering here would tie in with both, in the community as well, as well as, because as you can see, we went with what I call rebel blue. If I was going green, so I thought, oh, we're going to go rebel blue. But budgetary restraints, it was cheaper to go this route, and it's still a good look for our community, we felt. So you get more bang for the buck with this render.
Yeah. I just had that question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Somebody else may have a question, I don't know.
I have a comment, Mike.
Yes, sir.
I'm thrilled to death for y'all. I've watched y'all discouraged and got your hopes up and got them down, and thank goodness that it's going to be a reality. And the beauty of it is, it's on campus where our kids can get to it safely. It's, I'm so proud.
Truly a team effort. I have to thank everyone on the board, the prior board members, the county, school board. It couldn't be done without everyone.
Mr. Hensley, I recall our meeting down at the Capitol with Senator Ralston and Superintendent Gwatney was with us. It's nice to see this come to fruition. It's been a long time coming.
Yes, it is. And again, I thank you guys for your willingness to help the county. And, you know, we talk about government agencies and things like that, everybody tries to separate this. Fannin County is unique, and it's taken all of us to come together in one accord to serve the people of Fannin County, and that's what we're all elected to do. That was my promise when I got elected, and I sure don't want to make myself a liar by going against anything I try to. If I make a promise, I do my best to make it happen. So, again, we're gracious that this has happened, and Lord willing, groundbreaking will be in February. That will be construction start, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the, their goal is to finish sometime in the late fourth quarter in '25. So, we hope, we hope to have this completed and walk in, in 2025, that's our goal.
And that's the expectation.
You have to get it done before frost if you want to have those flowers blooming.
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. I want to say that it has been a pleasure to work, like you said, intergovernmental together. Same thing Mr. Bramlett said from the beginning of it when we first started. I know Dr. Gwatney was superintendent when we first started looking at it, and he brought it to my attention when I was the chair, and it was, it was a no-brainer. So it was one of the easiest decisions we ever made, especially with you coming into office and everything. So it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
So, and I'm excited, just like the rest of them, to see this come to fruition.
So we have a motion and a second. We have completed discussion. All in favor to accept, by the raising of your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you.
Woo-woo.
Thank you all.
Thank you all again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair and Board, the next item on the agenda is the 2024 GSBA exemplary board status. Dr. Roof?
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Madam Superintendent. At this time, we would like to recognize you gentlemen for receiving the 2024 GSBA exemplary board, receiving that status once again. And as you know, I'll tell the general public, this does not come easy. There are so many items, so many things that the board members have to be able to accomplish to receive this exemplary board status. We have, again, certain criteria that we have to, that we have to take care of. At this time, of course, we have the logo to go with it, and gentlemen, again, we're proud of you and proud of this opportunity to present.
Congratulations. And Board, if y'all would do me the honor of joining me for a moment, please?
Up or down?
I'm going to share a few statistics about our current board members. Mr. Mike Cole has served on the Board of Education from 2019 through 2024 for a total of six years. As of 2024, he is our current board chair, and he has served under Superintendents Dr. Michael Gwatney and Ms. Shannon Dillard. So, thank you, Mike Cole. We appreciate you very much. Next, Mr. Bobby Bearden has served on the Board of Education from 2003 through 2024 for a total of 22 years. Mr. Bearden was board chair from '07 to '08, in 2011, and from 2016 to 2017. He also served under Superintendents Ms. Sandra Mercier, Mr. Mark Henson, Dr. Michael Gwatney, and Ms. Shannon Dillard. Thank you, Bobby. Appreciate you very much. Next, Mr. Terry Bramlett. He has served on the Board of Education from 2005 through 2024 for a total of 20 years. Mr. Bramlett was board chair in 2009 to 2010, and then again in 2022 and '23. He also served under Superintendents Ms. Sandra Mercier, Mr. Mark Henson, Dr. Michael Gwatney, and Ms. Shannon Dillard. Thank you, Terry. Mr. Louis DeWes, he served on the Board of Education from 1989 through 2004 for a total of 16 years, and then again in 2009 through 2024 for a total of 16 years, with a combined total of 30. of 16 years. And then again in 2009 through 2024 for a total of 16 years with a combined total of 32 years on the Board of Education. Mr. DeWes was board chair from '94 to '96, in 2004, and 2018 and '19. He served under Superintendents Mr. Robert Foster, Mr. Morgan Arp, Ms. Sandra Mercier, Mr. Mark Henson, Dr. Michael Glatney, and Ms. Shannon Dillard. Thank you, Louis. Mr. Chad Galloway, he has served on the board from 2017 through 2024 for a total of eight years. Mr. Galloway was the board chair for the 2020-21 years. He served under Superintendents Dr. Michael Glatney and Ms. Shannon Dillard. Thank you, Chad. All five of these board members, as I've said before, they're men of faith and they seek God's guidance in all the decisions that they make. And we greatly appreciate each one of you. Thank you so much. Okay, if you'll remain for just one second. Ms. Dillard and Dr. Roof are gonna present and Mr. Danner.
Thank you for your service. The team got together and... And the team came up with what's on your mugs, if y'all wanna just breathe that. Just thank you for your dedicated service to this community. You are appreciated and you're lucky to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
And these items, the plaques and the mugs were all created by our students of our engineering department. So, that makes it special as well.
Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is school happenings. Mr. Mark Young?
Good evening, gentlemen and Madam Superintendent. It's good to be here. I joked with Terry Flowers on the way out, all of his accomplishments are because of his fifth grade year. I have to teach Terry and several other Flowers, brothers, cousins, and so forth.
Yeah, great presentation.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is school governance team update, Dr. Roof.
Good evening again. So for our SGT update this month, Blue Ridge Elementary School had a meeting. And as a reminder, as we are used to saying, all the minutes, the specific minutes of the meetings are housed at the schools if anybody is interested in those minutes.
Thank you, Dr. Roof. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is central office update and Dr. Lucas Roof and Heather Collis will give us an academic update of our progress so far this year.
And I brought Heather up here to the podium with me. I didn't feel like I smiled enough, so I wanted to make sure.
We continue to focus on kids. That rate is going to continue to go up. And, you know, so we're excited about that from that standpoint, the five-year rate, which means we recover some too. So, you know, some that we have lost, we recover. So very excited about that. But obviously, we're going to keep on plugging, I believe. One of our coordinators there said, we'll tolerate excellence, but we respect perfection. So that's what we're shooting for, is perfection, to get that 100%. Because even one kid dropping out of high school is one thing.
Absolutely. And we're still well above the state average. And just a reminder that graduation, that's the first goal, right? I mean, that's after that, it's trying to prepare them to succeed in life. So, and then.
So each year, our students in third grade through 11th grade take state mandated assessments. And the way the state scores students, they rate them on a scale of one to four. So a student who scores a one is a beginning learner, a student who scores a two is a developing learner, a student who scores a three is a proficient learner, and a student who scores a four is a distinguished learner. And so that kind of simplifies the whole scoring process, that they're scaled on a one to four scale.
And so if you look here, where our arrows are headed, for the most part, at the bottom of the screen, this is exciting for us to be able to share that when we do compare our, this data, when we compare last spring to the spring two years ago, we are, we increased in almost every single area in ELA in math across the board there when it comes to elementary, middle, and high school. So we increased our developing students and above, and also proficient and above in almost every single category. So that is inspiring for us. That means we feel like we are headed in the right direction. And we feel like all of the different items that we discussed previously in this presentation, all those are coming to fruition to allow our students to have more and more success.
Can I comment right there? The sports programs, I don't think there's ever been anything in any county like now. If a child needs to be in something to be helped to stay out of trouble, or however you want to put it, they're busy young kids. And that's a big factor in that graduation rate and those outstanding grades improvement, et cetera. Sports are not just games. They're, like they've taught, they teach stamina, many other things, endurance. It's a foundation to build on the rest of their lives. But while they're doing that, it's teaching them discipline and to take quality grades and to learn the real important values in life.
And that kind of segue right into this then, because the word that you see repeated over and over again on this slide is growth. And that's what we're about. Every year, how can we help kids to grow and get a little better and a little better and a little more prepared for what comes next? And it was really awesome because the state recognized that too. And so every one of our schools has received some type of growth award from the state. And those are listed here for you to look at.
And so this is, again, phenomenal. And principals, thank you for all your work. And of course, we know it all goes down to the teachers and all the work that they're doing. And so just, I want to say thank you, if anybody can hear me out there that's watching, just how thankful we are for our teachers and all the work that they're doing. And so that leads right into CCRPI. All of, that is still embargoed, all those different elements of CCRPI. We hope to be able to present that at a board meeting either December or January. But what I can tell you, and I know I've shared this with principals and they've been digging into their data, our progress scores, again, that growth, that student growth, it is astounding. Absolutely astounding with where our student growth, where our progress scores are right now. And I truly, and I know Mrs. Collis feels the same way, Dr. Huff, Ms. Tipton, my whole side of the world over there with academics, we truly cannot wait to be able to share all that data publicly with you gentlemen and with all the different ways that we can share that data. So looking forward to it. And again, thank you. Thank you for allowing us to present. And again, we're grateful for the opportunity.
Thank you both. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Danner, do we have public comment?
Yes ma'am, we have one. Mr. Nathan Ferguson. He would like to speak on clear backpacks.
Thank you for being here with us, Mr. Ferguson.
So Mr. Danner has informed me of the rules.
Well, Mr. Ferguson, I was going to ask you, but I was out there when he did. So thank you for clarifying that.
Absolutely. Well, I'm here today, this week being Veterans Day. Thank you. I know we got veteran members on the board and other veterans here. I appreciate all you do. And as veterans, I think myself and you guys and members of the board in general, we all took an oath to the Constitution of the United States. Under, you know, being United States citizens, I think Ms. Dillard, you brought it up last meeting, that it's a great country because we have the ability to have our differences, difference of opinions, disagree. But there's a point, there's a line in the sand we can't disagree on. And that's the Constitution of the United States. That's the highest law in our land. And in reference to these clear backpacks, it's definitely an infringement on the rights of our students. Just because they're little people, they're not lesser people. They're not lesser citizens of this great United States. Under that Fourth Amendment of the Constitution, the Constitution guarantees the right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures. This shall not be violated and no warrant shall be issued but upon probable cause supported by oath or affirmation and particularly describing the place to be searched and the person or things to be seized. Okay? If the sheriff come up and said, you have to put on a clear backpack to walk down the streets of Blue Ridge, you would say, no, that's a violation of my Fourth Amendment. Now, by us telling these students that we, they have to wear a clear backpack to walk into our public schools that we pay for, that's a no-go. This policy wasn't even voted on by the school board members. The football's been kicked to the SGTs. I talked to the SGTs, student governance teams, and they said, no. They said furthermore, in our trainings, we were told that we have no right to dictate safety policy, security policy. So obviously, the SGT did not vote this in. They were informed on it. I think the high school SGT did actually take a vote on it. But at the end of the day, when you do the numbers of students, by the numbers of backpacks, you know, we're looking at $30,000-plus that were spent on clear backpacks. Some which are breaking, the first-day students walk in the doors with, you know. You guys had to vote and elect to buy a truck for the high school, for the student drivers. You know, this truck was, you know, to the tune of $50,000, but it's going to be a decade-plus vehicle that the school system is going to have. But we spend nearly that much on backpacks that aren't going to last two weeks for these students. students. You know, so, at the point, you know, we, the people, elect the officials, you know, the officials do the best they can, and I know it's a multifaceted role. I see all the great things happening, all these students that, that are going through these great programs, doing great things, sports programs, academic programs, they're going out into the world prepared, but, but we need to send them out with all the knowledge, every bit of it. And, and, you know, we don't want to send them out there to be ran over by a tyrannical government. We don't want them to misinterpret, misinterpret their rights. We want them to know their rights, you know? Don't be run over by bureaucrats, hey, this, this is your rights. This is what's, you know, this is what's legal, this is what's right, this is what we want the students to know. You know, we don't want to just take away their rights, little by little, you know, we don't want to, we want to be proactive, we want to be secure, I get it. But every time I climb behind the wheel of my vehicle, I put my kids in the car to go to school, I'm taking a risk, I understand that, there is risk. But with that said, you know, I'm not willing to take anyone's rights away out of fear. I want them to have their rights, I want them to have their security, but everyone that goes anywhere, anytime, there is a risk, and we all understand that. It's, uh, you know, I've, I've heard several arguments, you know, teachers are scared, well, that's the administration's job, you know, the teachers have to go to their administrators, you know, the administrators have to handle, you know, that, from that point. And we have great SROs, you know? You know, I, I've even heard that, well, extracurricular kids, they have, you know, their bags, they take here, or the band, they take their instruments there, that's fine. But those same students, you know, the extracurriculars, without the clear bags and stuff, they're still walking through the commons areas, they're still riding the school buses. I realize there's no one answer to fix all of this. As per, one argument I heard from the clear bag policy was it was to keep the big guns out of the school. Well, handguns account for seventy-eight percent of mass shootings in the United States. That would be seven thousand one hundred and fifty-nine homicides in twenty-twenty-three. Rifles only account for three percent. And that's a twenty-twenty. But I, I feel like it boils down to the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution, I feel like it boils down to the money spent. I mean, you look at East Fanning, for example, there's a fenced-in area there for the special-needs children with nothing in it, it looks like an empty dog park.
I need to stop you right there.
Thank you, sir.
We have our five minutes, thank you, sir.
I understand. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve table board policy DIB, Dr. Roof?
Absolutely, this is finance policy, DIB, and this is something that Mrs. Nguyen came to me, essentially, our, when, when we have our audits, we always have updates to some of the procedures that need to be followed, and then our policies have to reflect those change in procedures. So this does come from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and we have also vetted this through GSBA, and we've vetted this also through our, our attorneys, PKKN, in terms of making sure that this tabled policy is what needs to be tabled, and, and it has been approved by both of those entities, so, this time.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Roof. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Board, do we have a recommendation? Is there a motion?
You have a motion, sir.
Thank you, sir, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor by a raised hand? It is unanimous?
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is to approve the Fanning County School System Charter Amendment, Dr. Roof?
Absolutely, so you, you probably saw reference to some of that, the, the speak of this in the school governance team, that, that review that we did, but we were set to go through a charter renewal this school year, and we were actually up and running and taking care of that, and everything was running smoothly. However, at the, at the state level, the charter foundation and, and the charter that's attached to the DOE had a change of hands at the top there, and so they felt like it would be better for us to go through our charter renewal after we go through our Cognia accreditation. So instead of going through charter and then Cognia, now we will be going Cognia and then charter. So with that said, we now have to come back and we have to amend the, the charter, and so what this is, this is the resolution, and the amendment that goes with this resolution to where we will now be looking, that whereas, hold right there, Mrs. Collis, whereas the Fanning County Board of Education seeks to amend its charter system contract by extending the contract term and date by one year to June twenty-twenty-six. So that's what, that, that's, that's the goal right there, that's the ticket, that's what this is all about, trying to get that extension to where, again, we go Cognia and then charter.
Thank you, Dr. Roof. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Thank you, ma'am, I will make that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes. The SGT teams are part of this policy, aren't they?
Yes, sir.
Mandated by such?
Yes, sir.
All in favor by a raised hand? It is unanimous?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve School Resource Officer Program Intergovernmental Service Agreement. Mr. Danner?
Uh, yes ma'am, this has been ongoing for as long as I can remember. So again, this is just a, an approval by you for us to continue to have our SROs in our school system, of course, our SROs are employees of the, of the sheriff's office, but again, they're part of our family. So we've got a great relationship, not only with the sheriff, but also our, our SROs along with the county government, again, I can't say enough, so I beg you that you approve this program.
And Mr. Danner, this is an intergovernmental agreement, where we, the county provides salaries for three of our SROs, and then we provide salaries for three, and then we have an agreement for maintenance on vehicles and those kind of things, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Board, do we have a recommendation? Do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
Thank you, sir, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor by a raised hand? It is unanimous?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve to declare West Fanning Elementary Furniture as surplus. Mr. Danner?
Per the regulation with the school board, again, these are extra items that West Fanning has declared, or want to declare surplus. If approved by the board, this will go on gov deals, like all, all of our surplus equipment, there's pictures of it, some of this stuff is pretty nice stuff, and, but again, they have no, no, no more use at, at West, has reached out to the other principals, again, they have no use for it as well, so again, we would like to put this out to bid on gov deals. And then the memo, Ms. Collis, uh, so again, there's the memo per regulation, DRR one, again, on gov deals, it'll go on our website as well. If nobody bids on any of these items, those will be declared as salvage, and then we'll do with it what we need to at that point.
Thank you, Mr. Danner. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Board, do we have a recommendation? Do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
Thank you, sir, is there a second? I'll make that second, and you'll get a third.
I was ahead of it.
Sir?
I was ahead of it.
Okay. I'll accept yours then. Is there any discussion? All in favor by a raised hand? It is unanimous?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is construction facilities update, Mr. Danner?
Ms. Collis, if you'll just scroll, again, I've got so many pictures, but again, it's, I don't even know where to start. This is before and after pictures, of, of, as close to the location as I can get, that is probably the most drastic one right there, go ahead, Ms. Collis. So again, if you've not been by the high school, actually, on a daily basis, I tell you what, it is, it is, it's truly amazing, these pictures are a week old, and, and what has been done in, in a week's time is just truly amazing. This is, again, looking back up. They've just started taking the topsoil off at the tennis court area on the other side, so again, again, if you have not been by there, you, you definitely need to go take a look. This retaining wall, you probably won't see, because what you see there to the left is the actual, the old, I don't want to say creek bed, but that's the old, down at the very bottom, so again, we, Superintendent Tanner and I went down there and took some pictures of it, but it is, it is truly moving along.
Comment?
Yes, sir.
When I look at this and look back over the past, I think this is Fanning County. This is so awesome, how it will impact our kids, their lives. It's wonderful.
Very true, very true.
Thank you, Mr. Danner. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve CTAe auxiliary building, Mr. Danner?
Very excited about this one, got with Mr. Hinson, Dr. Roof, I'll give Mr. Hinson a lot of the credit of this, mo, the majority of the credit on this. He got with Mr. Dealback, the auto mechanics teacher at high school, got with Mr. Flowers at the high school, got with Mr. Chastain at the high school. So when we tore down the old greenhouse behind the vocational building, we've got a concrete slab that's already there. So, so this is a seventy-by-twenty-four-by-tw- by twelve metal building, it's got five garage doors in it, it's got R sixteen insulation in it, uh, and what is unique about this, now, number one, go back up to the top, Ms. Collis, the price is, is thirty-one thousand seven twenty-one fifty, again, this is a metal building, uh, but again, it's gonna be hopefully repurposed when the, the CTA building gets completed. So again, we made sure that, that it can be repurposed without, you know, for a minimal cost, there's no electrical in this. So again, we talked to Mr. Hinson, talked to Mr. Chastain, Mr. Chastain is teaching electrical next semester, talked to Mr. Spurlin, of course, we've got, you know, we've got two-
Mr. Spurlin is-
I'm sorry, we, Mike Spurlin, who is our maintenance coordinator, we've got two certified electricians on our maintenance staff, and I said, "Mike, can our guys do that?" He said, "There is no doubt our guys can do it, it's just, are they gonna have time to do it?" And I said, "Well, we will make sure that they do." So hopefully, our maintenance staff, along with our kids and our instructors, wire this thing up, of course, electrical, lights, that sort of thing, and so again, it's very exciting. And again, reiterate, it will be repurposed once that CTA building gets completed, just to the right of that, where that's going, and then see what the goal is for the existing vocational building as well.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Board, do we have a recommendation? Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Thank you, sir, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I have a question, are you gonna condition the air inside eventually?
We probably not gonna put HVAC in it, now, we'll put heat in it, we'll, we'll drop a, an LP tank from the ceiling, and, but again, with those garage doors being open, we don't want to condition it, then it goes right out the door. And, so again, but it, it's, I don't want to say, it's definitely not gonna be a permanent building, it's gonna be a temporary, and, but the electrical, yes, we can, we can redo, the HVAC, that'd be pretty difficult to do. We have to, we'll get portables, and we'll do something in there.
All in favor by a raised hand? It is unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Danner. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is House Bill five eighty-one overview, Ms. Nguyen?
Good evening, Board, Madam Superintendent. So we have a overview of our House Bill five eighty-one, and this was voted on by the voters and passed in the November, you know, election. So our county already has a local homestead exemption, and House Bill five eighty-one is a new homestead exemption, which will decrease revenue for our school system. And this revenue, local homestead exemption, the less local five-mill share, which is part of our QBE, will not change or decrease with House Bill five eighty-one, because the state has deemed that the five eighty-one is a local homestead exemption, excuse me. And so the Department of Audits and Accounts gives us our sales tax, sales ratio study each year, and sets the equalized tax digest for our county, and that is how our local five-mill share is set, and so even though the digest might go, would go down, if we had the five eighty-one, it would not go down with the five-mill share. And so this is an est, shows you what an estimate would be, currently, this is, would be the estimate for twenty-five year and twenty-six year, and we have the final estimated for our twenty-four was the twelve-minute million reduction, and projected at fifteen million reduction for FY twenty-six, and your, the local five-mill share is capped at twenty percent of overall earnings for the state. And then for the, the law forty-eight point five says that we, certain political subdivisions, including school districts, can opt out of the homestead exemption, and in order to do that, we must opt out by, with a resolution by March the first of twenty-twenty-five, we must hold three public hearings, we must advertise those hearings in the newspaper and on the website, and in the correct language and the size, and issue a press release at, with the correct time, and forward that to the Secretary of State. And so, and this, you know, says we have to have the three public hearings, and with it stating that intent, and one of those has to be between six PM and seven PM, those hearings have to be on, during the business weekdays, and the district has to publish that intent in, in the newspaper and on our district website. And this is the actual notice that has to be published in the website, we just put in our information as the governing authority, and it tells you it has to be thirty square inches, not in the legal notices, and, and when it has to be advertised, it must run at least one week prior to each hearing. And then the actual resolution that must be filed with Secretary of State by March the first.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen, for that information, overview. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve district financial report, Ms. Nguyen?
Can I ask a question before we move on? Does the county have the same opportunity or rationale, reasoning to opt out to? Are they part of the-
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Do they need to do it with the school system for it to be effective?
No, sir, it's two separate entities.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine.
All county, all county, cities, and school districts are, are all separate, they, they all can decide on their own what they do.
Thank you, sir.
So here we have our September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, so we're twenty-five percent of our, complete of our fiscal year, so this is our general fund, statement of revenues and expenditures, and it shows our year-date revenues, expenditures, and our, what we have encumbered it. And then we can scroll and see our capital projects, and then our special revenues, and our school nutrition.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Board, do we have a recommendation? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, sir, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor by a raised hand? It is unanimous?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item- Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve school quarterly financial report. Ms. Nguyen?
Um, so this is our school quarterly reports from all of the schools. So that's from July the first, twenty twenty-four through September the thirtieth, twenty twenty-four for Blue Ridge. And then we have East Fannin. And West Fannin. And Fannin Middle. And then the CTAE. And then the high school. And that has all their individual accounts for like field trips and, and all the different types of accounts that they have. So that's all for July through September.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chair, I make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Board, I have a recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that. Any, all in favor by raised hand?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is SPOST update. Ms. Nguyen?
So for our SPOST, this past month, we received eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred, seventy-five dollars and thirty-nine cent. So that was, um, received October thirty-first for the month of sales that was completed in September, which was actually a decrease of five point seven percent of, below what we had expected to receive. Um, but we are still over our collections from what we had projected of eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars since, for our SPOST.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on our agenda is the SPOST audit update. Ms. Nguyen?
So we have received our performance audit from, um, Balden Jenkins that performed our audit. Um, and we have our report from them. And they performed our audit. And then we have the introduction, audit scope and objectives and the results. And so what I want to do is just kind of go over what the report is about. And Georgia Code Section twenty point two dash four ninety-one requires anyone that has more than five billion of sales tax revenue annually to obtain, um, the performance audit. And to, in getting that independent performance audit, the goal is to make sure that you've got three things to make sure that you're ensuring maximum extent possible that your tax funds are being expended efficiently, economically, and you're receiving the best benefit possible with those dollars. And that you're providing reports, um, of how those tax funds are being expended. And that if there's any neat way to, um, improve with that, then you're getting that information out as well. Um, and then the SPOST is, um, the Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Referendum. And that is the one percent sales and use tax that was voted for by the Fannin County voters for the purpose of funding school district building, renovation and other educational capital projects that would otherwise require financing through increasing residence property taxes. So that's, um, a good thing that we can have for buildings. And what, if you see in the last paragraph there, which I'm not gonna read, is what's actually on the ballot that was approved by the voters. And when you actually see in the newspaper, everything will be tied to those little ABCs with numbers next to it. So that's actually each item too, when they go to audit, they tie it back to what was voted on as to whether it was acquiring new computer equipment or the, or everything like that. So that's their testing. So then we can go on and Balden Jenkins, um, plans the audit scope. And they have objectives to make sure that they evaluate that the tax funds are expended efficiently and economically and, and that we're receiving the maximum benefit. So they have eight objectives that they, um, use to determine that. So they want to make sure that the schedule of projects adheres to the approved resolution that was adopted by the board. And that the reporting effectiveness of the school district and the board, we communicate, um, and about the capital outlet projects. And, and the status of how the capital outlet projects are going. And determine the reliability of the monitoring function to verify that the actual project expenditures are not exceeding budgeted amounts. And the effectiveness means of monitoring the program performance and the project timeline and the validity of expenditures and the timely completion of each capital project. Um, they also, um, look at the reliability and validity of the financial analysis to verify the cash flows, forecasted projections. They look at the effective procedures to make sure that the design and construction of the capital projects adhere to applicable quality control standards. Um, and they look at the effectiveness of financial controls to ensure that the receipt and expenditures of the tax revenues are in compliance with the applicable laws and regulations. And they also look at the management of the school district to make sure that we're following the board-approved procurement policies and procedures. So those are the eight audit objectives. And so then after that, they go through and they have to follow the audit mythology by auditing standards that they're required to by law, by planning. And then the analytical review and the risk assessment and the timing and everything of the audit. And then they prepare it and then they're reporting. So then they went through and they conducted the audit, um, of our school district SPOST program and operating in the compliance. And so they've, with all, they found that we are in compliance with all applicable laws and regulations. The referendum approved by the county citizens and industry's best practice. And that we're following the specific results of the audit. So, um, we're doing everything exactly the way we should. And you can look at the very first objective and it shows that, that, you know, the, what they did to determine whether the schedule of projects adhere to the approved resolution. And they tested sixty expenditures. And I'm not gonna go through and show everything, somebody else. Anybody can go back and read all the details of all the different ones that they, and we can continue to scroll down. But then they show exactly how they tested each objective of all of those eight and the procedures they applied. And my voice is kind of going out. But then they, um, the report is intended solely for the information and for the use of the Board of Education in, in our management.
Thank you so much. And you have been struggling, uh, today with, um, um, your voice. So I appreciate you pushing through for us, Ms. Nguyen. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve, to postpone the December twenty twenty-four board meeting. Mr. Tanner?
Ms. Dillard, after that comment, I don't set board meeting dates, so, uh, this is not my fault again. Uh, there is a conflict in the December board meeting, a GSBA board training, uh, uh, during the week of our normal scheduled board meeting. So again, this is just a memo requesting to postpone it by one week to the following Thursday, December the nineteenth.
Excellent. Mr. Chair, I make that recommendation as presented.
Board, we have a recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? I would like to say thank you so I don't have to drive back from Atlanta and go right back. So thank you very much. All in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is personnel. And if you all will go to the personnel sheets, please. I would like to take, um, these collectively when possible, unless there's an objection.
Good.
Okay. Um, all these recommendations are pending completion of paperwork, background check and training requirements. The first one is Dusty Henry, classified, effective eleven fifteen, twenty twenty-four. The next one is Keith Banny, classified, effective eleven eighteen, twenty twenty-four. And the last one is Tracy Kropin- Kropiniki, effective eleven eighteen, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Chair, I make this recommendation.
Board, we have a recommendation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Mr. Ferguson again for coming tonight and speaking. Um, and, you know, you spoke of Veterans Day and I would like to, um, do a big shout out to this past week, um, to our North Georgia Honor Guard. They did, um, a tremendous job supporting all five of our schools as they, as our schools participated in Veterans Day programs. And I am thankful to live in a community where, um, we have school leaders and community members who help to teach our young children the importance of, um, serving their country. Mark, thank you for all that you're doing at Blue Ridge Elementary. Keep doing a great job and keep loving the kids. I want to thank Commissioner, um, Hensley and Mr. Smithson for coming and for all their work on, um, helping for Fannin County to get a freestanding library. So Martha, your ladies outdid themselves this week in, um, Thanksgiving. The meals were amazing and the community turnout was, um, very heartwarming. We are blessed. Exemplary Board, I think each of you all for the hard work that you put in to earn that status for our school system. And most of all, I want to thank the good Lord for it all, for each and every one of you and for every moment that he gives us to be on this planet and do what we can do. With that said, Mr. Chair, I'll hush.
I want to go first today. I'd just like to, uh, first of all, Mr. Smiley's in the room. So I want to publicly apologize that the fact that, uh, when I spoke with you at the barber shop, I would have wagered my house on what I told you. But I miss misinformation from, you know how you, you, you hear something, but you hear it your way? My wife told me SGT, um, met for security and I could have swore that backpack was in that. They all met collectively five, but they dealt with security. But they did not, at that meeting, deal with the, uh, clear backpacks. So I want to straighten that out with you, uh, publicly. I called you and left a message, but I really, if I do it wrong, I'm gonna stand up and say I did it wrong and I apologize to you publicly. So, uh, I hope that clarified, uh, to you that I miss, I misunderstood it. And so, um, if that caused you any problem, I apologize for that. Uh, I want to tell you that, uh, student there, Bailey, um, at the Skills, that was just awesome to see her go in there and dominate that in a whole field of, of men. That was, I don't know, I couldn't be more proud. Um, her coach even said she left straight from there to go three hours to Ringo, roughly three hours after she's competed. Um, and the drive that our kids have is just so awesome. One that they didn't mention was, um, Mr. Queen, who, uh, entered the skid steer competition. He didn't practice for it, but that's what his family does. He got on and just dominated them to put this ball in this barrel. He got on that, uh, skid steer and just beat the time tremendously. So they, they forgot to mention that one, but he did a, he did an awesome job. Um, Mr. Roof, about the, uh, graduation rate, I, I know that, that is awesome, but when I look across there and look at, uh, rows of honor students, I'm, I'm just so overwhelmed by how many rows of just honor students that are at that level of academics. And that's, that's amazing. And it shows in that, in that picture. Uh, thanks to all the schools that, uh, put on that veterans program. That's, that's just tremendous. And the turnout that you have, uh, shows how much the veterans appreciate it. And, um, those that served at the high school, I know the, the, the kids here showing out again. They made a breakfast for the veterans. And then you had a different group of kids serving it. And, uh, just showing hospitality. It's just, uh, overwhelming. And from that, I'd like to segue into, uh, Bobby and Mr. Dewey's, uh, for their service, uh, to our country, serving that you can, uh, have those freedoms as well as you that are in the, the audience. And, um, Mr. Tony, thank you for your service of keeping and watching, participating with our kids and all that the SROs do. Uh, just a great job. Thank you so much. Mr. Beard?
I ain't got too much to say this evening. Uh, I was talking about Mr. Flowers. Uh, I've known him all of his life. I know his family. And I'm very proud that we got him to be the welding instructor up there. And he does what they said he did. He communicates with our children. They love him and it shows. Uh, special recognition. If you go through that and don't shed a tear, there's something wrong with you. Our children are truly something to be proud of. Uh, Veterans Day. I got a great granddaughter in Blue Ridge. And she said, Papa, will you come into Veterans Day? I said, I don't know, huh? I said, I gotta work. So anyhow, long story short, when it come time to go, two guys I was working with said, you better get out of here. So I went. And she had told me, there's a song that they're gonna sing and you're gonna cry. That happened. Beautiful song. It was just, it wasn't me, just me. I looked up in the crowd and there was people crying everywhere. Beautiful song. I want to try to get a copy of that song and try to learn it because it was beautiful. Uh, our three board members who got a plaque today, you need more than that. You need more than that. But I thank you for serving with me on this board. Appreciate all of you being here. Appreciate our principles and appreciate everybody who's watching by way of TV or whatever. And I love all of you and have a great Thanksgiving.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown? A great evening. We're celebrating that level of success is, is such a pleasure. And, and the success of our students is the ultimate measure of what we do and our success. But it was a great night and congratulations to all of those who contributed to those programs. Just, just, just amazing. And, and it does your heart so good to see that level of success. We'll never be satisfied. Education's aspirational. We'll, we'll keep pushing. We'll keep raising the bar and we'll keep moving forward. But my word, what, what a great level of success. And it's, and, and it's not just tonight. It's, it's, uh, it's throughout the system. Mr. Young, excellent report. Thank you very much. Thank you for your attention to detail on security. And it sounds like you may have some ideas that need to be shared. Uh, but thank you very much for your presentation tonight. Dr. Roof and Ms. Collis, it thrills my heart to see literacy, uh, among your areas of concentration. I believe that's the foundation of all learning. And, um, so thank you for that and I hope you'll continue to pursue it.
Mr. Dewey's?
Um, one more.
Okay.
It's an honor to serve.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dewey's?
Madam Superintendent?
Yes, sir.
You have a hack and a habit of presenting kids force, kids-first programs. And this has been outstanding. It's been kids-first all the way through. Beautiful. Our school system is blessed. You educators are something else. Gosh, I hope you're proud of yourselves. I hope you take time out to reflect and realize and just what you're doing is changing, changing the whole world, step by step, day by day. Y'all is so busy, you don't even have time to appreciate yourselves. But I, we do. There's a lot of people that know and appreciate you. So thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Gattaway?
Nah, I always hate sitting here because you have to go last most of the time. It's awful. Or you go first, so either way, it's bad. But, uh, this is a season for Thanksgiving. And, uh, my grandmother started a tradition long, long time ago. Uh, she used to make us all stand up- She used to make us all stand up and say what we was thankful for when we'd come over to eat and stuff. So I've got so many things to say and I won't keep you in here for all of them. But I do want to say that I am extremely thankful for this school system, all the hard work that everybody puts into it. I'm thankful for the community and the kids that make up this school system. We have an amazing community. Just, just a very small glimpse of what our kids are doing was here tonight across the board. I mean, for everything that they do is amazing. Uh, I think this year and the coming, before graduation starts, you're gonna see a lot of it. A lot of state champions, a lot of state runner-up, a lot, it's gonna be incredible. Just the amount of talent that we have in our school system is amazing. Most of all, though, I'm gonna take an opportunity here that I've never done since I've been on the board in eight years. I've never said anything political. But tonight, I want to be thankful that we have a president that I can be trustable with. One that I am thankful that is in office. And so I've, I've never mentioned how I stand or whatever, but tonight I am extremely, I'm celebrating. I don't have anybody else in this room, but I am celebrating. I have hope. It, things are looking better and better every day. If that don't touch you, I don't know what does. Lot of, lot of prayers have went up. And that brings me to the most important thing that I'm thankful for is to have a family that cared enough about me to take me to church and to teach me that the number one thing in life is, is being saved. And as Mr. Ramlet held up his cup, I'm gonna hold up mine. Mine says, God bless. And that's what I'm gonna leave you with. Loving and God bless y'all. Thank y'all.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor by raised hand? We are adjourned.